Learn a lot more about and we are all about empowering women at 100 Rural Women. And tonight, I'm just very pleased to introduce a couple amazing young women who have been building this project and who are going to be facilitating the discussion tonight. So first of all, I want to introduce Jasmine Terry and Jasmine is our graduate student at the University of Minnesota and Jasmine's been with us for the past years. We're really fortunate to have had her as undergrad and now as a graduate student. And Lindsay Romlin is our undergrad student from the University of Minnesota Morris. And Lindsay's been with us all summer and into the fall. So it's really been fun to watch these guys, you know, start to put this project together and connect with women. And I am just going to turn it right over to you Jasmine to kick us off.
Yeah, hi everyone. So as Teresa has mentioned, I am the graduate research assistant for 100 Rural Women. I actually started as an undergrad, as an intern for 100 Rural Women, graduated. And then now I'm here as a grad student. I just can't get enough of 100 Rural Women. So I'm just going to kick it off by giving you guys a little bit of background of 100 Rural Women, and then I'll tell you a little bit about what these sessions are. So 100 Rural Women is a nonprofit and nonpartisan organization, and they're interested in providing resources to support and serve rural women. We envision a world where more rural women lead positive change for themselves, for their families, communities, the nation, and the world. We also aim to achieve this by identifying and creating relationships, networking, leadership, mentorship, and civic engagement. We just completed over 100 meetings across the state of Minnesota as part of our 100 and 100 project that Teresa was kind of talking about. And we learned from and listened to women. The results of this, we had actually over 3,000 requests for support from these women. So building from this engagement and research, we are now in the process of creating and building a civic mentorship network with the end goal of engaging 100 rural elected women to mentor 100 rural women to pursue public service and in addition, provide public service and voter education. This spring, we were also fortunate to work with three graduate students at the U of M Humphrey Schools on the capstone project called April 2022, The Barriers, Breakthroughs, and Backbone of Elected Rural Women. In this project, the graduate students conducted interviews with elected women and learned a lot from these interviews. So now, after all of this, this research we've been doing, we're now holding these informational and educational meetings called Learn About It, as you see. And I just wanted to welcome you guys to the beginning stages of this. So this is the beginning stage of our civic mentorship network. If anyone's interested in this mentorship network or know any women that are interested in public office and is looking for a mentor, we will be providing a survey after these sessions for you to fill out and indicate your interest. If you have any friends that were unable to attend but are interested in learning more about these positions, we will actually be recording these meetings and posting them online to our website. So let's get started. We will first be introducing our speaker today, and then you'll get a hear from her directly. If you have any questions, please feel free to post them in the chat. Otherwise, we'll be hosting a space towards the end of the session for any questions, and you may raise your hand during that time or put them in the chat. If you don't feel comfortable saying it in front of everybody, you can actually DM Teresa directly, and then she will actually ask them for you. So I will turn the time over to Lindsay to introduce our speaker.
Great. Today, we have the opportunity to hear from city councilwoman and mayor Rita Albright. Rita is a lifelong resident of northern Minnesota. She grew up in Big Falls, where her dad was the principal of the school she grew up attending. She attended Bemidji State University, earning her degrees in geography and education. She grew to love the area and remained here. Here, Rita and her husband raised two beautiful children. They also took up owning an A and W restaurant for many years. After graduating in 2001, Rita became a community planner and later became the Northwest Regional Director with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources until she retired in 2019. Rita was elected to the Bemidji City Council in 2010 and served as the mayor of Bemidji for eight years, from 2012 to 2020. Today, Rita serves as a citizen member of the Legislative Citizen Commission on Minnesota Resources, but she will serve a four-year term ending in December of 2024. Please give a warm welcome to Rita Albright.
Well, hello everyone. Thank you. Thank you Lindsay for that very nice introduction. And I appreciate the opportunity to connect with you all, and thanks for taking time. It's a beautiful night in Bemidji. And thanks for taking time out of this summer evening to have a half an hour of conversation is what I hoping that we'll have. And I know there'll be time for questions, but I also want you to think about a question that I have for you, and that is, what makes you excited about public service? And what is holding you back from getting engaged in public service? So maybe think about that. Well, I just want to say a few things. That's all I want to say, I guess, before we get started with the questions that you have. Lindsay is going to ask me three questions, I think. Is that right?
I actually got that.
Oh, Jasmine, okay Jasmine.
But yeah, awesome. I am so excited to hear more from you. So let's just jump right into a couple of questions that you're going to answer. And then, like I said, if you guys have questions that come up as she's answering these questions, please feel free to put them in the chat. So our first question that we have for you is, why did you run for office?
You know, that's a question that everybody who runs for office should know the answer to, and my answer has always been, I felt like I had a set of skills that were needed on the city council at the time I ran. At that time, we have a seven-member council. It's a city manager charter, home charter city. And so the council really is policymakers. They don't direct staff or be except the city manager. That's their link to the staff. And so they're policymakers, but this council, they were having a lot of split votes for three and some disrespectful behavior, I thought, and just a lot of conflict that was holding the community back. And I found myself with time on my hands and decided that I would run because some of the skills that I had learned as a community planner really were consensus building, understanding the importance of respect, working in groups, being a solutions-based thinker and process person. And you know, my background in community development and community planning really helped me understand what makes a community thrive and be successful. But also, I cared deeply about my community. I had served on a couple of volunteer boards, the Charter Commission, I had served on Historic Preservation, and so, and the Planning Commission. So I, I feel I had sort of a vested interest in the success of the community. And being on city council and then running for mayor after that was kind of the next step after serving in some of those volunteer positions. But ultimately, I wanted to help Bemidji be, do better at active living, recreational opportunities, public safety, and also responsible, sustainable development. So those are kind of my reasons for running.
A lot of good reasons. So our next question is, what did you do in the office you served in? And what does like an average day look like for you?
I was elected to city council for a four-year term and midterm, I ran for mayor. So I was only a council member for two years, and then I was a mayor for eight years. So I'll focus more on my mayorship. And that job is in this community anyway. You don't have an office. People used to come to the city hall and they'd say, we like to say Rita. See, you know, Mayor Albright, and they'd say, well, she's not here. Well, when will she be back? Well, she doesn't have an office here. And so we, you're really a part-time citizen legislator or a citizen council member. And I was a part-time mayor, even though I had a full-time job. I would say the mayor's job took about 30 hours a week at least. So my support staff was really the city manager and the city clerk were very helpful to me and making arrangements and helping me make sure I was running meetings in a, in a responsible way and getting through our agenda in the correct way and that kind of thing. When we ask about a, an average day, there really wasn't any such thing. I always made it a goal to be ready for anything when I left the house. So I was prepared. And you know, I put on my, my makeup every day and fixed my hair every day because I never knew what was going to happen in the city of Bemidji, and I might end up being on the TV interview or being interviewed on the radio. And so I, I tried to be prepared for all occasions. And I got some really good advice from a mayor of Wadena, former mayor of Wadena, who said, always have a three-minute speech in your hip pocket. And so I did. I memorized a three-minute speech, and I often use that to greet conventions, you know, make presentations, introduce things that were happening in the community. So my time was really spent making connections, meeting with local organizations, community members, answering emails and phone calls, writing speeches and presenting speeches at conferences, talking about and sharing the success that Bemidji had had. So yeah, you know, ribbon cuttings and all the fun stuff that the mayor gets to do, but also a lot of reading, research, and preparing for meetings so that I was really well-prepared for what was coming up on any agenda.
That's awesome. Seems like you had a lot of hats, but it sounds like you definitely knew how to handle it.
Well, lucky for me, my kids were grown and gone, and I have a husband who's pretty self-suspicious. So I, I didn't have the, the challenges that a lot of elected officials do that have young children or families that they have to take care of and sports and kids and chasing and that kind of thing. So that was one thing I had that was probably on my side.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. So when you think about being a mayor or a city council member, what kind of benefits do you get out of it besides like, you know, getting paid or anything like that? Like emotional, psychological kind of benefits too as well?
Well, it's always really, as women know, we don't always get to be in charge. And when we do get to be in charge, that's a pretty good high. We like that. And it is nice to be able to be in charge. And to the extent that the mayor has, I would say, the bully pulpit or the ability to set agenda and is sort of the voice and that you are the official spokesperson for the city, that, that was always fun. And I, I took great pride in being respectful of that power, if you will, or that authority. But it's really rewarding to serve in public office. It doesn't matter if you're in the armed forces or law enforcement or firemen, or if you're a work for a public agency like I did, the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, that kind of public service, or we work for federal state agency or local government, or if you're an elected official. I think public service is really an opportunity to give back to your community and make a difference in the lives of people. And I felt that we made real progress in Bemidji, and I was proud of that in a number of ways, you know, especially addressing homelessness and building apartment buildings for people who are chronic substance abuse and homeless people and partnering with organizations to build transitional housing. We raised $2 million in our community to restore and preserve our Carnegie Library, and it's a beautiful functioning building now. You know, we had a water safety issue here where our water, drinking water became contaminated, and we had to really think on our feet and figure out how to address that very expensive problem and making sure that clean drinking water, which is one of the number one things that a city provides, is, you know, make sure that when you turn on the tap, you can drink the water, and when you flush the toilet, it goes away. And, and so, you know, making sure that we, we were really doing the best for our citizens and representing them in a very positive and respectful way. That was always sort of my goal. But also, you know, as a mayor, I was in organizations of mayors and also League of Minnesota Cities, for example, there's a lot of opportunity there to provide guidance and mentorship to other mayors and cities. And people always want to say, what is it? What are you doing in Bemidji? There's so many things going on there. Every time I turn in the, look in the paper, it's something about Bemidji, a great thing, you know, how do you do all that? And, and so sharing our successes, but also learning from other communities in networking events about how they're doing things and being able to bounce ideas around with other elected officials who understand what it's like to try and wrangle a council that doesn't really want to go where you want to go, or, you know, you have an issue that's a concern, and they've, they've dealt with it, and you can learn from them. Those are all really rewarding ways to have pride in what you do, but also to make sure that your community is, is really strive, you know, thriving under your leadership. And then finally, I would say that lobbying is always fun, whether that's at the state level and even locally here for, with our county or our other organizations that have an effect on what happens in the city. But you know, just telling your story down in St. Paul is, is really important in supporting the employers and the employees in your community and their efforts to lobby the legislature. And I also had an opportunity to lobby at the national level. I own, I was a member of MRCTI, which is Mississippi River Cities and Towns. It's a group of mayors of all the cities on the Mississippi River in 10 states. And so we had an annual trip in March to Washington DC to lobby, generally speaking, on behalf of two issues. One was transportation, which the southern stem of the river has more interest in because they have locks and dams and they need dredging for ports and, and that kind of thing, you know, it's different. The headwaters of Mississippi, the river is much different, as we all know in Minnesota, than it is down in Louisiana at New Orleans, or even in St. Louis or Iowa. So, so we lobbied on behalf of transportation issues, but also on behalf of sustainability because we recognize that we are, the, the Mississippi River, you know, is being polluted from Minnesota on down. And so what can we do? And how can the federal government help communities to do a better job of being sustainable in our work on the Mississippi River? So those are really rewarding and interesting. You learn a lot. You meet great people, and, and you just make a lot of friends along the way. But, but at the end of the day, the, the important thing is that you've done a good job for your community and you have moved your community forward and, and people respect the work that you do.
That's so interesting. Thank you. If anyone has any questions, please put them in the chat or feel free to unmute yourself and ask one. Um, I'll ask one first. Why do you think it's important for women to serve in public office in like particularly rural areas?
Well, I can answer that, but I bet everybody on this call could answer that as well because we all have an experience probably with, that reflects the need for women voices and the broader lens, if you will, on, on some of our issues. I would say that, you know, more than 50% of the population are females and more than 60%, I believe, of the college graduates are women. And yet, we are underrepresented in local elected positions, whether that's school board or county or township or city, also in state. Minnesota is not doing too badly. I think we're around, you know, 30% maybe, but you know, nationwide, we're really underrepresented. And that, you know, the reason that's not good is because the issues that everyone cares about are issues that women understand really deeply, whether that's women's reproductive rights, or if it's healthcare for their families, whether it's elderly care, women are often caretakers for elderly family members, whether it's school funding for their children or childcare, you know, safe drinking water, the environment, making sure that our communities are going to be sustainable into the future. Women care about those issues because they're close to our heart and we deal with them every day. And, and I think that we do a disservice to our communities and our country, our state, when we don't have women voices at the table, thinking about the, the way that those different issues really affect individuals and families.
Great. We have a question in the chat from Monica. Can you tell us about the experience of campaigning?
In Bemidji, you know, I, I just kind of made it up as I went. I had worked on a couple of campaigns, so I had a little bit of an idea of how a campaign should be run. And so first thing I did was write a letter to all the people, friends, everybody in my church and all the friends that I had, whether that was from being on committees in town, or we had a restaurant, you know, where I, I was a business owner. So I sent a letter to about 100 people asking for donations because I was going to run for office, and they sent me money. And so then with that money, I used that to send a direct mail to, I was, you know, across the city so that I could tell them I'm going to run for mayor. And, and, but my mainstay was, which almost every campaigner will tell you is the way to win an election, and that was door knocking. So, you know, having run for city council in my ward and then run four times for mayor, I, I've door knocked this whole city several times. And, and I, I think door knocking is the best way to, to campaign and to get people to attend and their votes. One thing, it teaches you a lot about your thoughts and policies and ideas as much as it informs those that are attending because you have to prepare and, and, you know, sort of consider what questions might be asked and how would I answer that? And it's, it's a really good exercise in trying to really firm up what do you believe about the way the community should be and how our government should run? And then finally, I would say, just, you know, trying to be as visible as possible and, and get as much earned media as you can by showing up and being at the ribbon cutting and whatever else is going on in the community. So yeah, it was, it was a pretty much a, pretty standard campaign plan. Raise some money, send a letter, do some door knocking, and always say thank you to everyone as well.
That's great. Karen, has her hand raised? Do you have a question for Rita?
Hi Rita, awesome to be here with you. So I live not too far from you in Bacchus.
Hi Karen, it's good to see you again.
Good to see you too. So your senate run was really ugly. And based on watching what you went through, I have said many times to people like, man, who would want to put themselves out there when they get treated that way and talked about in that way? And that's, and I think that last election was especially bad. But, and I know we're here to talk about city council and mayor, and this group is nonpartisan, but my question for you is really like, what recommendations do you have for people interested in running in places where they may, they might be in the political minority? And I, I mean, other than just like thicken your skin and just suck it up because we need great candidates, even if it's going to be hard, but like, what else would you say after living through that?
Yeah, that's a great question. Just FYI, Karen is, she screened me for National Social Workers, I believe, wasn't it?
That's right. Karen, National Association of Social Workers.
Right, yeah. And I was endorsed by them, so thanks for that. But yeah, I did run for senate in 2020. And prior to that, city council and mayorships are nonpartisan in our community. And so while I always considered myself to be progressive and wanting to try and move my community forward rather than, you know, be static. And, and I supported a lot of progressive issues, which I think should be universal, but they tend to fall on one side of the line or another, like affordable housing, you know, that kind of thing. So the, the question about the negative campaigning is reaching down actually to the local level. You've probably seen things about school boards and, and other city councils that have bad behavior. So it can happen at any level, but what I would say is that keep some positive people around you who will continue to lift you up. Try to ignore that that's more about them than about you. And, and I tried to stay on the go-high side and not go-low. Let others that aren't you be a spokesperson for trying to attack the other side. You know, that can be your, your campaign team or your friends, but you should try and stay on the positive side, and that's, that's what I did. But you know, 2020 was a weird year. We didn't door knock, which is my mainstay for getting elected. And, and with COVID, it was, it was just an odd year. But, but definitely there were a lot of negative ads against me that were hyperbole and, and things that had happened in the urban core of Minneapolis-St. Paul were transferred over to, you know, oh, she's going to be like those people down there and that kind of thing. So trying to just be true and, and get your message out is all you can, all you can do and have positive people around you. Thanks Karen for that question.
All right, we have another participant with their hand up. Feel free to go ahead and ask your question.
Hi Gwina.
Hey Rita. Um, I was just wondering about, you kind of talked a little bit about how you always had to be prepared when you're out in public and, you know, make sure you're, you know, right just in case someone suddenly puts a camera on your face or something like that.
Right.
What were some of the other kind of surprising things or element, sort of a public official that you, like, maybe someone didn't prepare you for? What was just kind of the most surprising or something like pieces like that, that transition?
I was often surprised when I would show up at a meeting or, or an event or something, and I was a part, I was just, you know, to, there to watch or see what was going on. And, and I would often be called up or asked questions because people want access to their, to their elected officials and, and because we don't have an office and I didn't really have office hours, or I didn't have a coffee time with the mayor like some council members do because I worked full-time and it was really hard for me. So, so I think, you know, just the fact that wherever you go, people are going to ask you about things, and they're very excited to learn about what's going on. And so I always really worked hard to share what's happening behind the scenes. And, you know, if I showed up at church or I was, maybe I was at a hockey game or, or is it the grocery store or something like that? Someone might ask me a question and then, you know, it would evolve into more questions and, and I would end up sending them a link to the newsletter or whatever so that they would understand, you know, what was going on. But, but I think it was the fact that people just genuinely wanted to hear your opinion and, and the backstory of what's going on. Why is the city doing this, that, or the other? Thanks Gwina. Gwina, I will, full disclosure, Gwina helped work on my 2020 campaign. So she knows the good, the bad, and the ugly that we went through on that campaign.
Awesome. We have time for one quick question before we run out of time. So Amy asked a question in the chat. What is your best advice for door knocking? What are the best days, times, and overall message?
Thanks for that question, Amy. You know, the best days and times are every day of the week. I would avoid, people don't like to be interrupted during the Vikings game on Sunday afternoon. I'll just say that. I never went door knocking between 10 o'clock in the morning before then, and I never went after 8:00 at night. I generally had to go after work, so I would start at 4:30 and go till 7, 7:30, you know, in the fall gets dark earlier. So, and then I would go on Saturday afternoons and, and Sundays, I usually, if I did door knocking, it was like from 1:00 to 3:00, not during the Viking game, or it was after the game at 3:00 to 6:00 or something. So that's one thing about door knocking. Number two, it doesn't matter whose sign is in yard, go knock on that door anyway because it doesn't mean that they really are supporting that person. It just means their sign is in the yard. And so I found that to be really helpful. I also, my, my shtick when I go door knocking is generally speaking, hi, I'm Rita Albright. I've handled my literature. I'm running for mayor. Are you registered to vote, or do you plan to vote in the fall election? That's always a question. I just toss it over to them. Do you plan to vote in the fall election? And they'll say yes, no, or maybe, and then I can go on from there. If they say yes, then I'll say, that's great. Are there issues in our community that are important to you? And then I toss it back to them again. If they say no, I'll say, do you know how to get registered? Or did you just move here? Do you need to re-register? And I give them the information about how to do that. So I tried to toss them an easy question that they could answer right away and say yes, or, you know, answer me like, are you planning to vote? I see you have a sign in your yard, you know, have you? are you planning to vote? I see you have a sign in your yard, you know, have you, you know, just, just talking about what, what I see in front of me. The other thing I often would do is I would say, I love your porch. It's so cute and you have this great scarecrow out here, you know, for Halloween. I wish I had time to do that, but this is just great, you know? Or they have great flowers and I'll say, you know, I try to make a connection with them. I have flowers too, whatever. So I know we're out of time and I appreciate the questions and all of that. But it's always fun to talk about women elected leaders. And thanks, everyone, for being on with us. And if you have other questions for me, I'd be happy to take them by email or by phone.
Yeah, thank you Rita so much. We appreciate it. I understand we are out of time. So if some of y'all have to go, feel free to go. Otherwise, Rita, do you have any final closing sentence about the importance of mentorship? Or you want to give advice to any prospective women that want to seek public office?
Just reach out. Other women want to help you succeed. I would say that is 100% true.
I love it. Well, well, thank you so much Rita and thanks Jasmine and Lindsay for tonight. And we just really wanted to, you know, get this series going so we can give people an idea of what the job is. So demystify those paths to leadership and get more women hearing about other women's journeys and seeing how, how it, everybody has skills to bring to the table. So, so please consider, please consider either running for office and joining the civic network or supporting somebody who's interested in doing that. So tomorrow morning, we've got our next, our next event, which will be with the former US Senator Heidi Hyde Camp.
Yeah, that'll be awesome.
Yeah, it'll be fun. We've got, we, we're so excited with everybody that we have joining us. And, and she'll be talking about the US senate also, running state, you know, serving as attorney general and, and running for governor also. So, so we will be doing offices from, you know, soil and water all the way up to the US senate and featuring amazing women like Rita. And Rita, if it's okay, well, you know, if we can share your email.
Yes, you can.
Wonderful. If people have questions, we will follow up with everything that's in the chat. We will, we'll be recording this, we'll be posting this. We also have a survey that we want to share, which just sort of gauges interest with you to see what you'd be interested in learning more about. And we just want to thank everybody tonight for joining. And I know these are tight. And we could talk for a long time, but we really tried to keep these at tighter timelines to just give people sort of a taste of what, what these offices are like. And, and Rita, thank you so much for sharing your experience. Really appreciate it.
Thanks for asking me, Teresa. It was really fun to do it and I appreciate everyone who came on tonight.
I love it. Thanks so much. Thanks, everybody. Have a good evening.
Bye-bye.
Have a great evening. Bye-bye. See ya. Thanks so much.